Good evening. I am calling to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023. And we will start out with a roll call of the members. Heather?
Mr. Rufford?
Here.
Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Terriaco?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Two of our regular members are not here tonight. They're both absent. So Ron Terriaco is our alternate. He'll be sitting in. So there's... Normally, we would have five up here. We have four tonight. First items of business to take care of are the approval of the August first minutes for that meeting. We didn't have a meeting in September, so we go back to August. Any comments on the August minutes?
Yes, Mr. Schindler.
You found something? Okay.
No. Page one, line 21, Andrew Lingefelter should be a vice chairman. Everybody else has a title behind them.
Okay. So it should read Vice Chairman?
Yep. That's all I have. That's all I found.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Vice Chairman.
Okay. So the only thing I would suggest is we add, after Andy's name on line 21, we add Vice Chairman. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meetings with that one amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I still move we approve the minutes as corrected.
Thank you, Frank. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Minutes for August 1st, 2023 are approved. Next is correspondence, and I'll start at my left with Frank. Did you have anything?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. My room?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ron?
None.
And I had none. So no correspondence. Public participation, don't see any public here. So I'm assuming there'll be no public participation tonight. So we'll move on to new business. And our... One item of new business tonight to discuss is the preapproval discussion, informal review, rather, of a project that would go into the Quail Hollow PUD. And we have a letter from Barrington Consulting Group defining the entire project, telling us what they would envision, and it's up to us tonight to discuss that. This is an informal review, so I'd like to just read a preamble that Heather put in to her comments. And that's basically saying in our zoning requirements, section 3603D, it says, "No action shall be taken at such a meeting, such as a preapproval meeting, and no discussions, opinions, suggestions, or recommendations discussed at the informal review meetings shall be relied upon by the applicant to indicate any potential and subsequent approval or disapproval of the plan." So we're not going to approve anything. We're not going to disprove anything. We're just going to discuss any concerns that might be up here on the board and understand what the project consists of perhaps a little better. So the item says that Barrington Consultants, on behalf of property owner Quail Developers Incorporated, is requesting an informal review for a potential commercial project located in the northeast corner of Cryle and Hunting Lake Roads, current parcel number 08-A-020-C-00-002-0. The property is zone R2 planned unit development. So with that, before we even go on, I believe you're probably here to represent that?
Right.
If you would like to come up and give us an overview, please?
Should I state my name or?
Yeah, just so for the record.
Todd Victor with Quail Developers, Inc. We want to propose a building which will be our new offices for Ralph Victor Construction and Quail Developers. And then we'll probably have about two more slots to be rented out to stores or whoever would want to rent there for maybe a workout facility. And then out in front, we have a small building similar to the Starbucks size with a drive-through on the front corner.
Is there a time proposal for the project?
Pardon?
As far as time proposal, when you would start, when you'd expect it to be finished?
Probably start in the springtime.
Okay.
At this point.
Okay. Well, we also have the drawing, which I believe is current and accurate.
Right. Because we have to... After we get preliminary approval, we have to draw the plans up for the building and everything and then bring them back here.
Okay.
For final approval.
Okay, very good.
Right. Right now, we're not planning to build that building out in front, just the back building.
That's phase two, I think it says on here.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Well, we will be asking questions, I'm sure. One of the first things we have to point out is that this is a conditional use for R2 PUD zoning. So before you could do anything on this piece of property, you'll have to go... You would have to go before the zoning appeals board and get an approval for a conditional use.
Right.
For that. And that would take place before we could do anything here. We do appreciate you coming in and doing this because we think this is a good use of everybody's time to discuss what we like, what we might not like, what you can do, what you might not be able to do. And it gives everybody a chance to do it before you put a lot of sweat equity into it. So we do appreciate that. And I guess I'll open it up to my peers here on the board for discussion and concerns. And I have some myself. I have some from one of our board members who's not here tonight, too. So Frank, I'll start with you. Questions? Comments?
At the present time, I don't see anything. It depends on meeting host whether I bring up a question.
Nothing on?
Nothing, no.
Okay. My room?
What's the intent of this drive-through restaurant and coffee shop? Is it just for your area or your... The three tenants in this building?
No, for everybody. For the whole area. Like, we have had some interest possibly in Dunkin' Donuts possibly might want to go into that spot. But we haven't discussed anything with the owner of them. But yet.
Okay. Other's here?
I guess I just don't... Whatever.
We'll get into that.
Yeah, we will. I don't know.
Ron?
Looking at the existing driveway that goes back to the water tower, it shows on the plan, are you going to be using that existing drive? Or how is that going to work in relationship with Kings of Water?
For the one off of Cryle?
Yes, sir.
That's for the... That's just going north to come out and go north on Cryle Road. And then the people coming from the north, from the south, driving north will be able to pull in that way.
I get... So are you going to take over, like, what better word, ownership of that roadway? I thought that was Kings of City's entrance to the water tower.
No, that's just a...
Or is that a part of?
That's just an easement right now.
Just an easement.
On our property, further access.
So that would remain gravel? That wouldn't be paved?
No, it's going to be paved.
It will be paved.
Yeah.
Then who maintains that?
We will. Because it would be part of our parking lot. They'll come in that way to get in there. There are water towers still back there. They still have the easement to be able to drive their trucks back there.
Would that also be used for incoming traffic off of Cryle Road for people that wanted to come into the facility?
Yes.
So it'd be a second entrance in a sense?
Right.
Okay.
But they won't be able to turn left out of there.
Right. I see that.
Yeah.
We do expect that corner where that would exit or enter to get a little bit busier because of the car wash that's coming in. It's under construction now.
Right.
So you would experience a little more traffic there. Don't know if it'd be a problem at this point. I can imagine on nice winter days, it could be a problem, but I don't know how big of a problem. Anything else, Ron?
Yeah.
I would also have a... Have we done any studies as far as site distance? When you're coming out that existing drive that we're just talking about onto Cryle Road, what about the site distance? Have we taken that into account? Or is there any studies been done on that?
No.
Okay. You're good. Okay, I have a couple. First of all, the drive-through in the PUD R2 is not a permitted use. And I'm not sure, Heather, this is a question, I guess, for you. It's not a conditional use. It's just not permitted. Would that go before zoning appeals? Or do they have authority over that as well? Could they authorize?
That would be the order zoning appeals.
They could authorize it even though it's not permitted?
Yes.
Okay. So you'd have to get that approved. The restaurant would be part of your package. That is a conditional use.
Right.
So you can have a restaurant in there. The warehouse is not a permitted use. So if you were to consider a warehouse in here, that would also have to be a conditional approval through BZA?
Yeah, those are more for our storage of the construction company.
Just more of a storage area?
Yeah, for our construction company.
Okay.
In the back part of our office.
Okay.
That's all.
Another one that you had on here, and I don't know if you have any intention to do this, but down in the typical other uses, you have furniture and appliance. And I went through our list. We have 30 commercial uses in the zoning regulations. Neither one of those are a conditional use or approved use. I suppose if you were to do a furniture or appliance, you'd have to have that approved by BZA as well. Offices, you're good.
Right.
No problems with an office. So my one... I have a couple of comments, too, is that... And I think the fire department had the same concern. When you come in off of Hunting Lake Drive, and you come in and take a left turn there, and then you go up and make a right turn into the parking lot, you have two handicap parking spots there. You have a proposed drive-through, and then you have opposite that on the right, next to your offices, I take a number of head-in parking spots. To me, that's a real congested area there right at that point when you make the right turn. And I'm thinking of in terms of... I think the fire department was concerned with getting a fire truck in there. But even a EMS vehicle might be tight if there were people in the drive-through, people in the handicap parking spots, people parked on the other side. It really gets narrow there. And I don't know what that distance is from the dotted line of phase one over to the... What appears to be a sidewalk?
A plant chain. That could be a plant.
That could be a plant. Could be a...
You're talking right here.
Yeah, right there.
Okay, okay.
I see that as a bottleneck there. Kind of an unusual traffic flow through there.
Right.
Do you know what that distance is from the dotted line there to the protruding, I guess, curb on the right?
Yeah, I don't have the... Probably close to an inch, probably close to about 25 feet, I'm guessing, there.
If it's that far, I think the fire department's coming...
22.
25?
22 feet.
Okay. So if it's 25, I guess it would be adequate. It's just a concern that it would be kind of a bottleneck with cars, especially with cars going around the restaurant. If there are anything like what I see at Starbucks, where you have 15 cars in line or whatever, that could get really crowded in there.
That's why...
And actually, could circle around.
That's why we pushed that entrance on Hunting Lake back farther, back to the back.
Mm-hmm.
So they could stack up a little bit better there if needed.
You could have customers coming in off of Cryle and the other entrance up there, coming down through to get into the line, as well as coming in off... I can picture your development on Hunting Lake there, or the Polte development where you come in, people going to work in the morning, coming in there and grabbing a coffee. But that line could get quite long. And my concern was just the traffic circulation there. That would be one. Also, Rich Iafelis is not here tonight, but some of his comments that he sent us was, he mentioned the warehouse, which we've already discussed, and the drive-through, which is going to have to have a variance. Poor traffic movement was his comment. He questioned the gravel drive, which we've talked about. He felt that, and I kind of agree with him, you may never need that landbank parking up at the top, but if you did have to use that, they'd be backing right out into possible traffic flow there. And I think our parking requirement said something about 10-foot minimum from a dedicated right-of-way, right, Heather? It's in the... I looked in the zoning book, 10 feet. But I don't know if that's considered a dedicated right-of-way, even if he paves it. Kind of an access road, right?
Right. That would not be considered.
Okay. So, anyway, Rich's concerned, and I share that concern, is that people backing out of there could be a little bit...
Yeah, we're not planning on putting those in if we don't have to.
Yeah, I understand. Okay.
Or we can put in some, pull it back from...
Yeah.
And eliminate some of those.
That'd probably be maybe a phase three, the parking lot.
Right.
Which we could talk about at the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm looking at the... When you come in, she does have a measurement on the plan.
Oh, okay.
At 22 feet.
22.
So that, over where you were talking, where the handicap spaces are, that's probably 22 feet.
Okay. Which is the requirement, right, Ron, for the fire truck?
Standard is 22 feet width, yes.
Okay.
But also turning radius comes into play also.
Ah.
So it would still be...
Would that be a problem at 22 feet?
We need a 28-foot turning radius, is what we always go by.
To bring the truck in?
So that would... Yes.
So it would be a problem.
Well, over where you turn, though, is what, going out? Is that where you're talking? It's wider at the... Where you're turning in there and turning out?
Yeah, I think we're... Yeah. So if you came in off of Hunting Lake Drive, Ron, turned left, and then wanted to go up between the buildings?
Correct.
You'd need 28 feet there.
Turning radius.
Turning radius.
Right. Because you have that little island there?
Mm-hmm.
That comes out from his main office building.
Mm-hmm.
And with the cars parked there. So you would have the width, but you still got to be able to make that... Make that turn.
Okay. So do you...
It is very tight.
Yeah.
It is very tight in there.
That might be something you could take a look at and see if you could do anything with that. I don't know.
Okay.
But it sounds like it could be a little bit of an obstacle. Rich Iafelis also commented that he didn't like the idea of coming off of a residential street for the entrance, but I see no... I personally don't have any problem with that. Does anybody on the board have a problem with that? That the main entrance would be on Hunting Lake?
No, no.
I think, actually, I prefer that over Cryle. It'd be another... I mean, you heard it going to have a little entrance up there, but the primary entrance, primary traffic flow might be coming out of Hunting Lake. And better to go in there than to go out onto Cryle and come out there. So I don't have a problem with that.
And the residential houses are back, way back.
Right, yeah, absolutely. The location. So I don't think the neighbors would have any complaints about that either, personally. The concern then from the fire department was, again, "Fire lane, fire apparatus access roads shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 22 feet and be installed and arranged in accordance with the 2017 Ohio Fire Code Section 503 and 503.2.3." And that's just talking about the road would be marked... "Fire apparatus access roads should be marked with no parking 'fire lane' signs if there were one there." And then he talks about water flow. There's three hydrants within 300 feet of you, so I don't think they see that as being a problem. Would that be adequate, Ron? Three hydrants, 300 feet?
Not knowing the particulars of the building, I won't.
Okay, okay. And let's see. Of course, it's asked to comply with the fire code, which we know. They recommend that the entire structure would be protected with a sprinkler system. Would that have a sprinkler in there? Is your intent to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And monitor by a fire alarm system?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Those are recommendations. Then, I guess, the only other thing would be Heather's staff report here. I don't remember how I copied this, Todd?
Yes, I printed it out.
Oh, okay. Do you have any problem with anything that she's got in there?
No, not...
Everything in there should be complied with?
Yeah.
Okay.
We might be able to get more parking spots following this setback up on the front here, too.
Yeah. That's a possibility.
The one comment from Heather's area is sidewalks.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have any sidewalks proposed?
There'll be sidewalks around the building. Is that where you're talking, in the front?
Well, it might be...
In around...
Along Hunting Lake Drive?
Uh, no, no sidewalks along Hunting Lake Drive, no.
There are no sidewalks back in...
Right.
The housing area.
There would lead to nowhere.
Cryle?
No. There wouldn't be anywhere to tie it into when we leave that.
Yeah.
Yet. Yet. Yet.
Yeah. Cross that bridge when we come to it, I guess. Heather, is there anything happening? That's also a similar lot across the street from this, right? Between the Drug Mart complex, that little wooded area in there, that's R2.
That's also owned by Quail Developers.
So you own that piece of property?
Yes, across, next to the Drug Mart.
Yeah, the section that's right there.
Right.
Which would be opposite your driveway?
Yes.
So that's yours. Okay, so there'll obviously be no conflict, whatever you do in the future, because you'll be able to control it.
Right.
That's a good way to do it.
We were planning to do that one first.
That's a good way to do it, Todd.
Yeah. We were planning to do that one first, but then we switched to this side.
Okay. Okay. Well, everything that... Unless somebody's got something else, I think that's everything. As long as Todd's read the zoning commission report here and the comments and so forth, you're aware of that. You know you have to go to BZA.
Right.
For those conditional approvals. Is there anything else we need to point out?
I have a curiosity. Is your restaurant, coffee shop, and whatever going to be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
Uh, I'm not sure. We haven't really talked to anybody about going in there yet. So it would be up to whoever would want to lease the space.
Well, I know in the past, when things like this have gone in, 24-hour service, especially when you're going through a drive-through and the loudspeakers and stuff, you can hear all night, sometimes become, you know, a hassle or a problem with the residents that live in that area. That's why I asked that question. In some cases, we've had restaurants and drive-throughs only open, drive-through, well, I shouldn't say only open, but for us, we're certain now they shut that off. So they won't disturb the neighbors.
Right.
Would that hopefully be the intent if something like this develops?
Most of the cup, like the Dunkin' Donuts, they shut down... They're not open all night.
Okay.
We really haven't talked to anybody about that space yet, so like...
Well, that would be one of the things I'd be concerned with.
The nearest house that would be way down here on the side of water tower?
Yeah, we're not near any residents.
You know, when it's very quiet at night, sound travel is quite a distance.
Right.
You don't hear it during the day. But at night, you know, when it's very extremely quiet, no breeze or anything, sound travel is a long distance. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Right. Yeah, I...
I've had areas where I've stayed personally in my travels, in hotels, for example, and around things like this, that become annoyance, trying to fall asleep at night.
Right.
That's why I bring it up. Certain establishments, like you say, Dunkin', they do it as a company practice. Other ones, there's no guarantee.
Right.
That's why I bring it up.
Well, that would be if someone wanted to lease there, they would have to come in for approval, too, right?
I think that when that would come in front of the board of zoning appeals, with their consideration, I don't believe that that would be brought up by them as well.
Okay.
But I kind of vocalize those concerns at this point, too.
Sure, sure.
Help you steer you towards certain tendencies potentially versus others.
Right.
Well, I know our impromptu meeting tonight, it goes in the minutes.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the zoning board of appeals is going to hear everything tonight that we discussed.
They could.
So, well, I would hope so. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I know.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, can I ask a couple things about... Have you thought about... From my experience with a couple other developments, dumpster locations are kind of an aphor, but they are logistically become, you know, part of the traffic circulation. So I just don't know if you've thought about, you know, where you're going to put those dumpsters? Are you going to have two different dumpsters? Are they going to be integrated into the building design? So they're not some other separate structure that you're trying to fit in somewhere in the parking lot? Or...
Yeah.
You don't necessarily have to have that answer tonight, but just something to think about.
Yeah, we'll think about it.
As part of the design.
Or put that...
If you wanted... You wouldn't want it seen?
I don't like the way it turned out at Chipotle, I'm going to tell you. Like, the way that they did it there is not desirable. Yeah, especially if you're over in the plaza when they're emptying the dumpster.
Right, I know.
So that, you know, if we could avoid a situation like that.
Yeah.
Wouldn't make it a nicer...
We might have a little more room back here where the stormwater's going. They did do the calculations firmly on that, on the detention area, yeah.
Yeah.
So we might have a little bit more room back here, too.
Something to think about.
With that stormwater management area, would that be a standing pond that would always be full, or only during rain, and then it would drain off?
I think that one was supposed to be a dry basin.
That's what I was wondering.
And then fill up when it... Yeah, only when it rains bad.
That way, you avoid the geese. You don't want geese in all of your parking lot.
Yeah, that's... That's a concern, too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Do we have anything else, gentlemen?
Not really.
Okay, I think the biggest concern seems to be situated around the traffic flow. And obviously, the variances that you still have to get from BZA. So I guess the next trip is to go see BZA on the conditional use permits that you need and give that some thought as to the traffic flow, especially at that congestion point on the corner there.
Right.
And then the dumpsters, obviously, too, because they take some space. So I guess we have nothing else for you.
Okay.
Good luck on the project, and you'll be back to see us if you get your approval.
Thanks.
You know what we're looking for.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of business, if I can find my agenda, is all business. And this was going to be a tabled work session, but it's untabled because Heather has some new information here. And...
Mr. Chairman, we might want to make a... Take a vote to just untable it, to put it back. Because I still... It was still tabled on the agenda this evening.
Oh, tabled, yeah. Okay, so we're untabled.
So you can entertain a motion to...
Can I have a motion from one of you to bring this back alive again for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I still wonder, do we bring this table topic back into discussion?
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay. A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's on table. Is the intent tonight, Heather, I was trying to figure this out from Mike Lucas's memo, to schedule a public hearing for just the PUD portion of this?
Well, just a quick background for anyone listening or in here in the room. These were zoning, pending zoning text amendments that the commission was working on, actually, last year. And we finally got a little bit of feedback from our legal counsel regarding those potential amendments. And these amendments really had to do with the process of reviewing a final... amendments, and these amendments really had to do with the process of reviewing a final development plan and/or any modifications to an approved development plan for the PUD or the RCD. So, Mr. Lucas did get back to me yesterday afternoon, you'll see in your email, that he did have some comments, but he also said that should you want to still move forward with this, that you could, if the commission decided to, set a public hearing this evening, and then we could always make some changes to this document based on, you know, feedback from Lake County Planning, or also just the, the comments that he gave, like, during the public hearing. So it's really up to you if you guys want to push it and, and set the public hearing, or if we want to take a little bit more time and look at what Mike's comments were.
So the public hearing would be a combination of PUD and RCD?
Well, right, it's all in Section sixteen of the zoning resolution, and basically the processes kind of mirror each other in both.
Okay.
So what effect, both, yeah.
Okay. So this packet that we have here is what that Mike Lucas reviewed, correct?
Well, right, and this was our latest, this was our text from August of last year.
Yeah, so this is where we got.
So mine might be fresh in everyone's mind, you know, because this is kind of been tabled for quite some time, so.
We probably forgot what we said, but it's all written here.
Yeah.
We can kind of go through it again if you'd like, if you have, you know.
Do you guys want to go through it tonight, or you want to defer it, or then take the next few weeks to review it?
I, yeah.
I'm hoping either way.
Yeah, and I'd like to have all five of us here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Full council.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe the public hearing would be December instead of November?
Yes, I think we will hold off on scheduling that for a little bit more time, and maybe at the November meeting, if you guys, we'll put this on again as a work session.
Okay.
I'll take a look, and that'll give me more time too, to take a look at Mike's comments and maybe recommend some, some tweaks based on his initial, his feedback.
So everyone should go through this handout that she gave us tonight, which we've been through before, but with fresh eyes, go through it.
Yeah.
Anything we didn't think of, or anything we'd like to change, we can discuss that next month and then schedule a public hearing for December.
Yeah. And then the changes that we're looking at are still in red?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. So what is the main areas of concern, right? Okay, that sounds reasonable, we'll have a, a full staff. I will say I won't be here in November, unfortunately.
Okay.
So you guys will have to do it without me, but anyhow, that's, that's what we'll do then. Review it. I'll get my comments to you in the interim.
Okay.
Because I'm going to be out of town for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
But I'll get those to you, and we'll do that. Okay. So that's kind of our old business tonight, and we'll defer that until next month. Anybody have anything else for discussion?
Not per me, Mr. Chairman.
I, I have a question, Heather, just.
Yes.
General information. Last year, we approved a swimming pool company for Ravenna Road, whatever happened to that project?
At this point, he's not moved forward with the project, and I believe that's due to the, the cost.
Okay.
It's significantly higher, I think, than.
So it's been over a year though, right?
Ah.
Pretty sure it was last year at this time.
Yeah, it's probably almost a year now.
So they're going to have to reapply?
At some point, that approval will expire, I don't remember off the top of my head how long that lasts, I'll take a look at that and.
I just drive by there and I never see anything happening, so.
I know, yeah.
Okay. Well, if no one else has anything, our next meeting is November seventh, 2023, and with